Good evening, everyone. The hour of 7:00 PM having arrived. I'll call to order this August Borough Council meeting of Carlisle. Will, uh, would please rise for a moment of silence and pleasure allegiance. The anniversary of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 reminds us of the dedication and perseverance of civil rights activists and the power of movements to create transformative change in pursuit of multiracial democracy. Less than four months after President Johnson signed the bill into law, a quarter of a million new black voters were registered to vote, a third by federal examiners. Within a year, there were only four southern states with less than half of black Americans registered to vote. Fifty-six years later, we find ourselves in a fight to protect the gains so many gave their bodies and lives to. As attacks on voting here in PA and across the country continue, I ask that during our moment of silence, we reflect on the words of late Congressman John Lewis, who reminds us that freedom is not a state, it's an act. In order to protect our right to vote and expand the democracy that we cherish, we must continue to act in the name of those who sacrificed before and for generations to come. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And now, before we begin this evening, uh, is there a motion to allow Deputy Mayor Schultz to attend virtually due to a work conflict with tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? It is moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Ms. Fulham Winston?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Ms. Landis?
Here.
Mr. Schultz? He is not on Zoom yet, so hopefully he will.
Okay.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
Mr. Stube?
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard. Is there anyone here to address Borough Council on a matter relating to Borough Government? Has anyone on Zoom sought recognition, Joyce? All right. Moving forward, the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on by one motion in the current form. If discussion is desired on any item, a council may, uh, consider that item separately. Uh, does any council member see an item they'd like to see removed? Okay. Yeah, the public, no one here. Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Second?
Second.
Motion has been made. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. And if you're following along at home, that takes care of everything on page one, two, and three. We will now move to page five for the regular agenda. We have, uh, two tabled items. Is there a motion to remove these items from the table so they may be considered tonight?
I will make the motion that they be removed.
We have a motion, but we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Um, first up, I move that council... Oh, okay. We did that. All right. Okay. Um, all right. I'm a little confused. The, the first... Okay. So just have to do number two. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, person in my ear. I move that council consider executing a contract with Frederick, Seibert, and Associates, FSA, to develop and design construction plans and specifications to install a public park on Lot A and Lot D at the Fairground Avenue Linear Park located along Fairground Avenue, subject to the Borough Solicitor's satisfactory view and approval. The fixed fee for this service is $39,000. I so move.
I second that.
With motion and a second? Any discussion on this?
I have some... I have some updates, um, since I was the one that tabled it last week. And I, and I do appreciate everyone just taking a little extra time on this one just to make sure that we have all the information. Um, and, uh, I was able to go to the Parks and Rec Board meeting the following night, and we had a very good discussion. We had, uh, one, uh, skater come out as well and give some, um, feedback and everything. So we had a pretty lengthy discussion. Um, and the main question that I had was, um, about this contract was just ensuring that we have everything in order to allow, um, a qualified skate park designer to design that park and just trying to figure that out. So I did, um, follow up with, uh, Chris from FSA. And so here's just a little bit of information so that everyone, um, is on the same page. So he spoke with Matt from Armit Concrete and, uh, and he has built skate parks. He's worked on York. He's worked on Stilton. Um, so he, in the, he's local and, um, uh, so it says they're fully capable of preparing construction drawings for the skate park. They will draft all plans, details, renderings, um, and that will include, uh, that we will include in our overall master, master construction plan. Um, and they will work as a subcontractor for FSA throughout the design practice, process and act as the skate park design experts. Um, they, uh, he will, um, attend meetings with community members and community state skaters to design a skate park that fits the needs and wants of the community. That was really critical to make sure that we had some sort of process, although we don't have exactly the meetings outlined yet, but there, um, uh, we would be, um, having public meetings as well as we're using the Engage Carlisle to solicit feedback on that. Um, FSA will work out a contract with Armit for their skate park designing for a future time. And it says also that, uh, FSA and Armit, um, will draft detailed construction plans that will be used by contractors for the construction. Um, due to the public bidding nature of DCNR grants, other skate park builders will be allowed to bid on the skate park, um, if a general contractor, uh, contacts them to partner. In the past, Armit has, if allowed, partnered with, uh, contractors before to build their own skate parks, um, in a grant funding scenario. Um, but also, uh, a specialized skate park contractor will most likely come in as the sub, um, because a regular contract, contractor usually doesn't have the experience or feel comfortable in building a skate park. So we do have to go through our standard process, um, uh, but also, um, you know, try to work with, uh, you know, either Matt or whatever other contractor would come along. So I think that this actually, uh, was very helpful to have that process in place, make sure that we also have, um, plenty of opportunities for community feedback, skater feedback directly with the designer himself. Um, so, uh, I am very comfortable with moving forward on this tonight.
All right. Yes, and FSA, we've worked with FSA before, um, as Council Landis will remember and most of you here. The Hepple Lake Palmer Tot Lot was an FSA project. So I've always found FSA to be responsive and welcoming of community input, and I really think we need to lean hard on that because there's some very, uh, robust folks that want to have a good discussion and they're very passionate. So we want to make sure that we take care of them and that they know when these meetings are. So, um, that's all I have on it unless anyone else has any other comments.
Do we have any idea what the RFP for actual constructing will be? What's the goal for having it let, uh, after the plans are done?
I'm sorry, I missed.
Um, do we have a timeline where we'd like to bid the final plan out by?
Um, I don't have the, it's on...
I think the timeline was included in our, in the bid, I, or in the contract, I think it was.
Right. Let me see. Uh, on the table items, it was on there. Um, we're, we're soliciting feedback through September 15th and... I don't know where it is. Um, so, oh, here it is. Okay. So we, uh, have feedback, um, through September and then prepare construction documents between September and November, um, between December and February, agency, construction document review period, uh, obtain all approvals, submit approval draft. Um, so, uh, oh, and September to November was also prepare draft bid document package. So it looks like somewhere in, in that vicinity. And then late February, uh, advertise the project, pre-bid meeting, project bids due, um, obtain all approvals, and then March 15th approximately. Um, construction could begin and anticipated project completion would be June 2022.
Okay. So we, we are on target to extend and to buy the due date. So it'll probably be front loaded, probably before the project is completed, we will have extended the funds we, we need to, okay? Which might be a little bit different, uh, since, um, sometimes they are done incrementally, but.
It's an aggressive schedule.
Very aggressive. But I'm assured they can get it done, so.
Yes.
All right. Anything further? All right. Hearing nothing further, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Um, under, like, elected officials, mayor's report. I have no report. We'll move on to reports from committee. Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item this evening. Um, Borough Council may adopt an ordinance to enter into an agreement by the Downtown Carlisle Association and the Borough of Carlisle Retroactive to January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Mr. Hicks makes a motion to, uh, adopt an ordinance entering into an agreement between the Carlisle Borough and DCA. Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those involved, this is a roll call. Madam Secretary, if you please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Ms. Fulham Winston?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Landis?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Scott?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Public Safety? Oh, that's me. I move that council adopt an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle with respect to Chapter 244, Vehicles and Traffic, establishing a four-way stop for the intersection of Dickinson Drive and Bazler Drive and the intersection of Sadler Drive and Biddle Drive. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Now, hearing none. Uh, this is a roll call vote as well. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Ms. Fulham Winston?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Landis?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Scott?
Aye. Motion carries. That ends my report. Public works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask Borough Council to authorize the mayor to sign Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewage Facilities Planning Module Exemption Form for a connection to the Borough's sanitary sewer system from the land development to be located on 101 and 120 G Street.
Ms. Fulham Winston makes a motion for the Borough to, uh, allow the mayor to enter an agreement, uh, for sewage facilities and the planning module exemption. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. I would now ask that Borough Council authorize the mayor to sign the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewage Facilities Planning Module Exemption Form for a connection to the Borough's sanitary sewer system from the proposed Franklin Street land development located between 1106 and 1138 Franklin Street.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. I would now ask Borough Council to approve the purchase of a New York Blower Company 30 horsepower ventilation fan from J.K. Hastings Equipment Sales LLC of Lancaster, Pennsylvania, for a not-too-exceed cost of $17,500 to replace in kind the existing Ross Sewage Wet Well Ventilation Fan at the Carlisle Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Ms. Fulham Winston makes a motion for the Borough to approve the purchase of a ventilation fan. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. And last but not least, I ask Borough Council to approve an agreement that amends the January 1, 2014 Agreement for Treatment of Sewage in order to change South Middleton Township's allocation of capacity among its points of connection to the Carlisle sanitary sewer system without increasing the township's overall capacity allocation.
Ms. Fulham Winston makes a motion for council to amend the sewage treatment agreement with South Middleton Township. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And that concludes it.
All right. Thank you very much. Onto new business. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss with Borough Council? Please give your name and address, uh, for the minutes, please.
RNER. I'm at 165 East High Street, Carlisle, PA. Um, uh, some of you guys know me, uh, some of you have seen me around. I'm a local chef, um, I'm a father, um, a community activist in trying to just organize people that have a need in the community. Um, I've spoken to Tim Scott and Brenda Landis and mostly over Facebook, but tonight face-to-face, and we've worked together on other projects. And, um, I'm kind of offering my assistance to the Borough Council in any way I can. Um, we've been trying for a long time to get an actual skate park in Carlisle, and there's a lot of guys in the area that this is important to, and there's a lot of kids that it's important to. Um, as somebody who grew up skating, um, and has on and off my whole life skated, um, and being an older member of the community, we, and I mean, some of the people that I've reached out to, people that I talk to in the streets, just guys that we know, we, we want to see this done in a way that doesn't disrespect the community and doesn't disrespect the Borough. Um, we want people to go there. We want people to want to go there, but we want it to be safe also. Um, and there's a lot of ideas that people have. Um, I want to step up personally and offer myself, I've started reaching out to people and organizing their, our builders and skaters and guys that have worked with other projects. And I've reached out to guys that have done other parks in this area. Um, we combine just the dozen of us that I have together, probably have close to 300 years of experience skateboarding and building things.
That's a long time.
However, the other side of that is none of us are government officials. Um, you guys have engineers, you have processes that you have to go through. The last thing that you potentially need is tons and tons of people each throwing an idea out or possibly in bickering among themselves over this. I, I very much appreciate you guys inviting the people to the meetings to actually be a part of it because that's, it's remiss of us as the people that have been saying and doing this for years and saying that we're building a community to not step up and actually offer what we have, whether it's taken or not. At least it's our due diligence to offer our experience and say, if you're going to do this, it's, it's, it, we're the community. We should step up and say, we know this. Can we help you? What can we do? Um, and that's what I'm here to just kind of mention is I, I'd like to start running kind of point on that, and I will make sure that any information you pass that I can get to because not everybody follows the Borough websites. And you know, it, it's, it's two different cultures coming together. We want them to come together the right way. And, you know, not everybody that, that, that is going to have good ideas for that wants to stand at this pulpit. I've stood here before, so I'm willing to take that, that, that role, and I'm willing to call these guys and speak their language. And if they want to sit in the parking lot and skate while they talk, I'm willing to do that, you know? If they want to come here and do it, I'm willing to come here too. Um, uh, but I wanted to, I wanted to reach out to you guys and say thank you for this. We, again, have been trying for years and years. Um, and we are here to offer our expertise in any way we can, you know? Uh, from the people we know, from the park builders, the skate parks that we've been to, ideas for, um, modular pieces that not necessarily will have to be built into the park, but can be, um, grow as the park grows. So looking at building things that have certain stages to them or that can be used in separate ways so that you can build a small pop, park, but still offer many levels of things. You want the people that have, are my age, that are 40, bringing their kids there. You want the 16-year-old kids that are really good. You want the 10-year-old kids that just watched the Olympics and bought their first skateboard. You want it to be inclusive for all of them. And, um, I'm just offering as a, a, a member of the community and to anybody that, you know, wants to reach out and has any questions or, and the guys that I have, some of them are way smarter than I am at half this stuff. Like, I'm just asking them to push me information so that I can be a conduit to you guys. Um, and that, that's kind of it. Thank you guys so much, and, uh, we, you know, look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Jason. That's how it's supposed to work, so thank you and thank your, your folks as well.
And I'll say that, um, at the Parks and Rec meeting, and Stephanie was there as well, we did talk about, um, you know, we're trying to get feedback through the Engage Carlisle, but, uh, you know, we have our meetings, and yes, I think having a meeting in a parking lot with skateboards is fine and lovely. Um, but, uh, we did talk about, once we gather a lot of that and we kind of look at what, um, the requests have risen to the top, that we would maybe push those out, um, in, uh, like, online, uh, so that we would have that information transparent and then have a, an additional feedback meeting, like, where we kind of, like, maybe give a presentation and overview of what it looks like. So, um, thank you, friends here.
Oh, they came. Good. They came. All right.
Yeah.
I was getting worried.
So the process would, uh, very much, um, be working with folks. I mean, I, and, and what you did say, uh, is duly noted because I already saw a comment on the Carlisle's escape park page of someone not really into, because it's not big enough. Like, there's always going to be, be a, you know, a complaint, but like, we have to start somewhere and like, then we can prove it and hopefully, you know, like, maybe we can grow in the future as well. So I think, you know, there's going to be a little bit of, you know, chats back and forth, but I think that we can do it.
You may.
Yeah.
Uh, one question, one question was brought to my attention, and I don't actually have an answer, is would there actually be with the lots, the way they're set, is there a way for either park to expand in the future?
At this point, and I've asked the same question last time. Lot B is not, Lot B and C, which is in between, so A is by the railroad tracks, the little park, and then D is at the end. So the two in between are stormwater, uh, retentions at this point, and after that has been completed, then we can choose what we want to do with it, correct, Mark?
Yeah, that, that's correct. So, um, right now, they're in the property of the developer. They're using it for erosion and sedimentation control. Once the development has been completed in a fashion so that area that drains to there has been fully stabilized, uh, then they could convey that to the Borough and the Borough could undertake modifications to it as you see fit.
But we don't have a contract or anything, or anything that says that they definitely will convey those to us, or is that something we have to ask for?
The approved land development plan calls for them to convey to the Borough upon completion of development.
Okay. But that's going to be a while, so that's why we, we just got that little bit, so we're going to focus on that and then, um, but what you did say was, and I'm, I promise I'll stop talking soon, but, um, uh, the community and the mentorship and the making of the safe spot and making, you know, having people of all different ages and keep, you know, because there's always, you know, I've already heard it, you know, they're like, oh, it's a skate park, right? But I think that that, like, proving that is a big part of it. It's not just, like, building it and make sure people can come, but making sure that, like, yeah, I mean, there is a community. It's just, as I've said before, it's not a baseball team. It's just not as organized. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Ramsey?
Yep. Uh, would it be possible, and thank you for those comments, I think they were perfect, um, to set up some sort of walkthrough? Because I'm even in these discussions envisioning what it looks like on paper, but I wonder if it's easier for people and the experts that we have to walk through the site, maybe, Mark? I don't, I don't want to volunteer all your time, but to get out there to see how big it is and what can go where, because I think that is an important piece to all this.
Yeah. Would that be possible to do? We can just put it out there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And also, maybe if we have, like, markers out there that, that would identify, because I, myself was like, like, I mean, I was taking pictures, but I didn't really know where the boundaries were.
I think so. I think there's like markers and stuff, so. So be on the lookout for that, gentlemen. Going to invite you down, take a look at, take a look at the site. Okay.
I'll just add one other thing. If it's useful to meet separately, not here where it's a little bit more relaxed, uh, if that facilitates more discussion from interested parties, I, I for one, most speak for myself, I'm willing to take part in that, so.
Yeah, no, we, we were kind of stopping, you know, as, not necessarily needing to be here, but, you know, we'll, we'll gladly hash out our stuff in other places and then bring, bring the final polish, whatever we decide to send to you guys, that there are ideas that, you know, because obviously some of us are going to have ideas, and then we're going to play ten minutes later, really like, no, that's a terrible idea. So, you know, we just wanted to find a way to, like, make, make that avenue available. And I appreciate you letting us go out and look at it. That would be a great idea. I mean, even just to start to get eyes on, you know, you know, square footage and stuff, because as in buildings, you're going to lose certain things and gain certain things. So there's always those, um, images of vision.
Sure.
You may. Just come to the microphone.
It's okay. You can just give us your name and address.
My name's, uh, Mike Dyson. Uh, I live, I've been, and living in Carlisle for, since I was younger, was born here. Moved away, I came back. Anyway, avid kit, uh, for skate parks, been a skateboarder for 34 years, also a builder as well as he. Um, we've seen it. Um, we've seen the mistakes that have came with people that don't know about skateboarding or anything about building a park, you know? To the normal folk, they pat themselves on the back and go, look at the great job we did. But to people that know what they're looking at or skateboarder, they're like, this doesn't work. It's actually more dangerous. And normally that comes because the contracts are given to sidewalk builders. They're not given to official skate park builders. And I talked to Jason on the phone last night and gave him a whole list of professional park builders. So when the time comes, I know it's, you know, kind of, you know, it's a short ways away, um, but I think we should get in contact with those companies. And what they do is see, they can look at the site, even if it's small, they can make it functional. They'll draw it up and set a proposal, you know, here's how much it's going to cost. So that's the only, one of the only reasons why I'm here is to make sure that doesn't fall on the wrong hands. That's it. And if, um, you guys need any, anything else from us, we'll, we'll be here at every meeting.
I did, um, bring this, uh, it's okay that you missed it, but, uh, um, the, uh, Matt um, the, uh, Matt Armit from Armit Con- Concrete is gonna be, uh, the, the design, uh, subcontractor for design, but that's not the, that's not the contract for building it. Because it is grant-funded, we do have to follow DCNR grants, so I don't know, I don't know details on anything else than that, but basically saying that, um, that most likely people that pour sidewalks would not be interested in this type of job, but it is, it, it does have to be bid out, so that's like a government.
Right.
Because we are funded, so there, there is some, you know, questions that would be coming, but, so we would have someone that can help design, we'll work with the skaters, we'll have feedback meetings with community and everything, but when it comes to the actual construction, um, that may be some more conversation that...
We, we know Matt, and we're friends with Matt, so, um, and that being said, I would much rather have someone else do it, not, not saying, he's getting better, okay? What my, my, the whole, what, where I'm, where I stand is longevity. You know, if you guys are kind enough to support this and back it, and, and, you know, get behind it and spend all this money, you don't want it falling apart in ten years, because then you guys are gonna have to figure out how to come up with money to repair it, and I've already seen Matt's stuff fall, start falling apart, and I've seen his building techniques. Not going to take that away from him, you know, if he, if he's the lowest bidder, you know, and he moves forward, that's fine. I would just like to have other outside input from professional park builders that are world-renowned, and that are, that would be straight honest with you guys, and, and, you know, I just, I want to use every avenue that we have instead of just, you know, pushing forward and getting it done, so, it's the only reason why I'm here. Thanks for your time.
And Mike, we, we made Jason give his address, can you at least give us a business address, if you don't want to give your home address?
Um, nineteen-oh-one, uh, Wagner's Gap Road.
Okay.
Carlyle, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Yep.
If you know professionals who are really good at this?
Yes, well, I, I know them, um, I was actually the, um, the manager of Twin Pollin Skate Park.
Oh, okay.
Years ago, um, a company called Team Pain came in and built it, and we, I worked alongside with them, and that, and that was honestly, um, a small area that they made it functional, and it was a hit, um.
But if you could submit their name to Brenda's, so that when we develop a list of people to whom,
Sure, sure.
who will be notified that a bid is, is into works?
We are, we are, have a list, um, our favorites, and either one of them would be great.
Excellent.
There's some park builders that are, um, they, they cater to, like, bowls, um, snake runs, and there's some that are just street-oriented, and some that are well-rounded with everything.
Right.
So, and it all depends on the area.
Sure.
So, and I noticed that it was at thirty-four hundred square feet, approximately.
Something like that.
Something like that, yeah. But if you could share that information?
We will.
Because then we can reach out to them when the bids go out, that they would be included on the bid list.
That would be amazing. We will, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, all right. Yeah. So now we'll go into reports from council members and staff, we'll start down with, uh, Council Landis and work our way.
I don't have very much to offer, other than what I've already offered about skate parks and, and being really excited about all of this work, so. Other than that, I don't have anything left to add.
On Saturday, I got to read the proclamation, um, about COVID Awareness Day to the folks at the COVID Remember Walk out at APEC, and a very stalwart group of about a hundred people in really hot weather came out to remember their friends and loved ones who have passed because of COVID, and it was, uh, an honor to be there.
Mr. Ramsey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, just one quick thing today, uh, for data logs was the release of the census data, um, so that's important for us in local government. Um, hopefully, federal government will kick us, uh, more transportation funding, and, and that, I think we have a lot of opportunities to, to, um, you know, use that money for good, not just, and I, I know Brenda's been great about this, not just expanding highways, but finding creative solutions for sustainable transportation, biking, skateboarding, especially if we build these cool things and people come to, um, our area, we want to make sure that it's all, um, sustainable and done in the right way, and I think we're on that path, I, I think, you know, with the Climate Action Commission and the other work we're doing, we'll get there, um, but Cumberland County was the seventh highest, uh, growth out of our sixty-seven counties, so that's good news, um, but that means there's a lot more people, um, we're getting more diverse in this county, which is all awesome, we just need to make sure we have the, uh, have the opportunity to serve folks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stube.
I have nothing to say to Mr. Mayor, thank you.
That was quick. Mr. Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one thing, I just, um, want to shout it from the rooftops how happy I am about the new director position announcement that went out, kudos to Amy and Susan Noone, who put this, um, incredibly appealing, um, announcement out, and I can't tell you how much I'm looking forward to working with this new hire, this director for sustainable community and economic, uh, sustainable community and economic plan, got it? And, um, this is just gonna be a fantastic person who, um, several of our commissions are gonna be able to work directly with, um, um, I think, free Owen and Susan to do some things that are more strategic, and, and I really am thrilled um, at the quality announcement, and I can't wait to see, if you have a, a cousin, somebody you know out there who's looking for a great job, work, uh, in local government to really make an impact across so many areas, um, economics and, and sustainability. Um, this is a great opportunity, so pass it around, send it to anybody you think might be interested, and I look forward to having a lot of qualified candidates coming in. So, tell all your complaints.
Agree one hundred percent. Susan, anything from staff?
No, sir, not this evening.
All right, Mrs. Solicitor? All right, all right, seeing nothing for, oh, I'd like to announce that after this, upon adjournment, council will meet in executive session this evening to discuss personnel and litigation, we do not anticipate reconvening. All right, we are adjourned, thank you.